We will go ahead and open up our combined work and regular session. Please silence and shut off your cell phones and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Additions or depletions?
Mentir knowledge.
Okay, so I'm going to probably be moving to an office thing around because Erica's not gonna be here till later today. So I assume we'll just squeeze that in whenever we can. First up, obviously, public comment is open during the entirety of the meeting. We have a number of you joining us today, welcome. We have an EMS and trauma system evaluation information. Is she going to join us virtually?
Mm-hmm, she's here.
Oh, perfect. Amara, can you hear us?
Yeah, hi, I'm sorry, I was just reloading.
Hi, no worries. I hope I'm pronouncing your name right.
You are, yes.
Alright, um.
I also have a presentation, um, as well.
Yep, um, do you wanna, are you looking to share your screen?
Uh, yes, if that's possible.
Amara, is Rachel joining our meeting too?
Yes, she is.
Melanie, this is Liz Heckathorn as well. Rachel said it opened up, uh, a little bit strange at the very beginning, so she's rejoining.
Okay.
So I'm just gonna go ahead and share my screen and then do some quick introductions and then, um, get into what the project is about.
I'm gonna add.
Oh, it says host disabled.
I just have to add her, sorry.
Okay, no.
Uh, we also have Charlie Twate, uh, from our Lake Health District Hospital, uh, the CEO. We also have Tyson with us, he is our EMS director, and Daniel Tag, um. And, uh, yeah, we have ODFNW and I'm sorry, I hate that.
So, I, I'm Philip Millburn, I'm with Oregon Fish and Wildlife, I'm the clam with the Mount here watershed district manager, and I just came over to, I was in the area, I wanted to come by and introduce myself to, alright, folks in Lake County.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, um, do you think I can share my screen now?
Oh, sorry, I meant to give you.
No worries.
I think you have your permissions back.
Okay, let me try it. Okay, is it working?
Yep, perfect.
Okay, so you can see that PowerPoint, right?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll just, um, jump right into it, um. Yeah, so, hello everyone, my name is Amara. Uh, thank you so much for, um, inviting me to this meeting and giving me the opportunity to discuss a pretty exciting project that, um, we're hoping to work on. So just a quick introduction about myself. Um, I'm an AmeriCorps Vista at the EMS and Trauma Systems Program at the Oregon Health Authority. I just graduated last year from Oregon State University, uh, with a bachelor's in public health. And so here at the EMS and Trauma Systems Program at the OHA, we do a lot of different things. Um, sure, maybe you've worked with us in some capacity, but our main goal is to really just ensure that emergency medical care in Oregon is functioning effec- efficiently and effectively. So I also have two of my, um, supervisors here with me today. So if Liz, you wanna introduce yourself first and then Rachel, just kind of a quick introduction about, um, your role and, um, who you are.
Hi, yeah, of course, my name, good morning, everybody, by the way. Uh, my name is Liz Heckathorn, I am the EMS and Trauma Systems Program Manager, and my role is really oversight for this project. Um, and, uh, kind of pulling Amara in, uh, to specific areas of our state or what, uh, pieces of this pilot project might be incredibly helpful. Um, as she goes through her project, she'll let you know about the history of the project. Um, this is the fourth year, uh, into the project, and so we're really excited to finally be reaching, um, a point where we'll have some tools and some really good information to be able to roll out to the rest of the state. So, um, I'm just gonna kinda sit in the background and listen in and answer any questions, uh, if needed. I think, uh, Amara should can take it away, and then, um, I'm gonna turn this over to Rachel to introduce herself.
Good morning, everyone, um, my name is Rachel Ford, and I am the Oregon Emergency Medical Services for Children Career Manager, and I work really closely with our Vista members, and Amara is a shining star in that world, and I'm so pleased that she has this opportunity to speak with you today, and thank you so much for giving Amara the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you, um, so, yeah, I'm just gonna get into the project. So, project I'm here to talk about today is a collaborative pilot project that we're planning to do with Lake County EMS agencies. So the purpose of this project really is to improve access and sustainability of rural EMS agencies in Lake County by, um, first assessing needs and then working to build and share resources to address those potential needs. And overall, this project will not only inform Lake County EMS agencies, but other rural agencies as well. Um, hopefully, the findings and the things that are developed from this project can be used as blueprints or picked up by other rural agency. So, um, the main idea with this project is to have a focus on rural communities and the agencies there. Um, so we know that, sorry, rural EMS agencies have differences in the ways that their agencies operate, especially in accessing resources compared to more urban areas. So with a project like this, we can better understand those reasons and then work on developing and strengthening some of those solutions to address those areas. Um, really, I wanna highlight that the purpose of this project is really to be a collaborative effort where, um, our findings allow us in Lake County to work together to better understand the EMS agencies there. Um, and this is, you know, gonna be information that the agencies will be able to use, um, to make sure that their agencies are functioning, um, in the ways that they want to. And so we actually did this project with Mueller County last year, and we had a pretty positive experience. Um, but Lake County was identified as a top pick for this year's project from other, um, rural Oregon counties, um, based on a research interview process I conducted. So I, I reached out to the Office of Rural Health, as well as people here, um, in our EMS and Trauma Systems Program, of all the counties they felt would be interested in a project like this, and they felt, um, through the work that they do in working with Lake County, that Lake County would be interested in a project like this. So, yeah, I also looked at the 2019 Rural Listening Tour at the Office of Rural Health does, um, other demographic data about the population in Lake County and, um, health outcomes. And then I also looked at previous, um, data and current data that we had from our annual agency renewal surveys. And with all of that, um, Lake County, um, ended up being our top pick. Um. So, sorry, my mouse does not work. Do you want to describe my? Okay, there we go. Uh, so an overview of this project is, right now, we're on step one, which is to first email agencies and stakeholders to find out if this really is a project that they're interested in. Um, and then if they wanna participate in as well. And then once we do get those responses, we will be sending out surveys to gauge, um, what's working well and what are some areas of improvement or need for the EMS agencies. And then I will take those surveys, and, um, we have a wonderful data team as well that will kind of analyze those surveys. And then we will reconnect with everyone to go over the survey responses and to address what, um, comes out of that. So last year when we did this project with Mueller County, um, when we were able to reconnect and go over the survey responses, a lot of what came out of that conversation is informing a toolkit I'm working on. So, um, the purpose of this toolkit is to be kind of a living resource, that is a one place, um, like a one-stop place for EMS agencies to go to to find different resources, such as funding opportunities, um, recruitment and retention opportunities, um, so just a lot of different resources. And out of the conversations with Mueller County, something that they really wanted to see was a section of the toolkit that kind of overviews the policies and procedures, um, that are necessary for, um, EMS agencies to function. So, for example, if there is a transition of leadership, usually they found that it was harder for people to learn about, you know, what was needed to be done. So having this, um, in the toolkit was something that they really liked to see so that the new person would be, um, well-equipped. And so. I'm so sorry, my mouse is just not working today.
Try using the arrow buttons to get the slides. On your keyboard.
There, I missed a little bit there. Um, so this is, we contacted the agencies and stakeholders on August 10th. And so, um, this is the contact list of those agencies and stakeholders. And then, um, these are kind of the current statuses of each of those. So we contacted Lake District Hospital, who said that they were interested. Uh, North Lake County EMS is also interested. Paisley Disaster Unit is interested. Um, Silver Lake Rural Fire Protection, um, Rural Protection Fire District is interested. And then Christmas Valley Rural Fire Protection District, we haven't gotten any response from yet. Um, Lakeview Fire Department is interested. New Heim Creek, um, we haven't gotten any response from. Thomas Creek Westside Rural Fire Protection District is interested. And then this is a new one that was added to our list, um, that John from Paisley Disaster Unit suggested we add, which is the High Desert Rangeland Fire Protection Association. And so they need to still be contacted. And then, um, of course, we have the Board of Commissioners, and then Lake County Emergency Manager is interested. Uh, Lake County Public Health is interested, and then we also contacted Sheriff Mike Taylor, and we heard back from, um, Daniel Tag saying that, um, you know, he's a deputy there, so they're also interested. Um, so that's kind of the current status of, um, where everybody is at. And then I also wanted to briefly go over the surveys that we will be sending out to the agencies and stakeholders. So this is a brief overview, and I can definitely get more detail as we get closer to sending those out or anybody has any questions. But the surveys are based on a method called the Modified Community Self-Determination, um, Assessment. And these are basically community assessments that are designed to better understand the agencies by having more specific qualitative questions. And then doing the, this, the, the surveys are most useful when shared with agencies and stakeholders to inform decision-making. Um, because they are more focused on the agencies, um, rather than looking at, um, other, um, factors around the county. So there are three different surveys that, um, are going to be sent out. The first is specific to EMS directors, and then the second is specific to volunteer EMS providers, and then the third is specific to law enforcement and emergency management. And so each of these surveys, um, kind of has different questions, but overall, they ask about the things that, um, each of these people are feeling are going well, and I also identifies potential opportunities for improvement. So they, uh, cover a lot of questions, um, a lot of different kind of topics, surrounding operations, finance, staffing, quality, and public relation. Uh, so from the Board of Commissioners, we're really just looking for encouragement and support for the agencies to participate. We have pretty good momentum going on right now, so just keeping that throughout the project. And then when we do get those survey responses back and find out, um, sort of the things that, um, maybe do need to be developed or strengthened, um, I think collaboration during that time also is, um, going to be really important. But yeah, that's kind of an overview of the project, and if anybody has questions, feel free to ask them or if you do think of questions later on, um, this is my email address, so feel free to email me anytime as well. But yeah, that's kind of what I have.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, sure, so, um, it's a collaborative pilot project, we're, we're doing EMS and Trauma Systems Evaluation. Let's say you get this feedback back, what, what are we gonna do with the information?
Yeah, that's a good question, so, um, basically what we do is that we look at what sort of responses, um, that we do get back, and because we're asking a lot of different, um, people, we're hoping that we are able to see some trends and places that we, um, feel like things are going well. And then in places that we feel like things could be developed or strengthened, working with, um, kind of everybody to figure out what sort of, um, things that we can develop and, um, kind of help, uh, address those areas of need or, um, things that do need to be strengthened. Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Am- uh, Amara, this is Charlie Twate from the Health District. Two questions. Um, what do you expect to find from these questions? What kind of, uh, needs are you anticipating will be identified? And if you know what those are, what do you think the state will do to try and help deal with them?
Those are really good questions, so, um, working with Mueller County, some of the sort of trends we found are the things that we do normally see with rural agencies. Um, and mostly in respect to, um, accessibility of resources. Um, you know, having those personnel, um, ready and available, and then also just getting funding. And, um, kind of having those operational things we found were, um, sort of the main things that we, um, are expecting to see in these surveys. But also, you know, every county is different, so that is, um, kind of why we wanted to go with Lake County, um, is because we work with Mueller County, and now we're looking to see, you know, what is different in Lake County and what are some of those areas that, um, you know, would be new information? And in general, it would just help, you know, the EMS agencies there and the people that work there just to know sort of how their, um, agencies are functioning. Um, and then on our part, we're just looking to collaborate, um, really just being a supportive role in whatever ways that we can. Um, uh, you know, our department works with a lot of different aspects of, um, sort of the functionality of EMS agencies, you know, with licensing and things like that, so just being able to develop any resources and, um, kind of look for ways that we can support, um, EMS agencies, if those are the things that come up.
I would also add that, um, our work with Mueller County was quite informative as far as how, um, or what we needed to include in building out the toolkit. Uh, and really, that toolkit will be pointed towards, uh, rural and frontier agencies, and it's, it will be of benefit to have more than one perspective, so more than one group of, um, assessments to really pull from. That way, we're making sure that we are addressing, um, the needs of our state. And so that's, that's one of the big things, like, we so appreciate Lake County's willingness to participate in this process because it will be quite informative, and it will help so many different agencies across the state.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Rachel, that's a good point.
So, a quick, I, I have several questions, but I'll just ask one at a time. What's the, um, what was it, you mentioned that, uh, you were looking at different counties in the state. What was it that jumped out about Lake County to put us at the top of the list, quote-unquote?
Yeah, that's a good question, so, um, we looked at a lot of different things, as I had mentioned, um. The main thing was looking at sort of those, uh, annual license and survey responses and going through those. And in those survey responses, we do, um, ask questions about areas that agencies would like to see, um, more improvement or things like that, and so we did feel that Lake County was somewhere that would be interested and willing to, um, kind of, um, participate to kind of help those areas.
Good, um.
I would say, I would say too, that there's been several opportunities for agencies in Lake County to participate in EMS for children-specific projects, and they've overwhelmingly been very active in those. And I think when Amara was kind of looking at different counties to, to approach, um, in my mind, I was like, oh, Lake County would be a great place to start because they have been so active and willing to participate.
Yeah, thank you, Rachel, hey, everybody, this is Liz Heckathorn. Um, hi, Charlie, good morning, it's nice to see you again, although I can't really see you. Um, I do wanna address a couple of the questions that were asked, and one of them was, um, what makes Lake County, uh, a, a good, um, partnership for this project? And, um, I think as all of you know, we've been looking at EMS in our state for the last 25 years, and we've also been trying to do some modernization through the legislature. Um, that bill didn't pass this year, but we're still pushing forward with some other options to, to try to get our state to, uh, a state of being where we have an EMS system and not just, uh, separate counties and, uh, separate EMS agencies and 800 licensed ambulances around the state. We, you know, we don't have a conflagration, uh, act like the fire service has. We're looking towards, towards those types of, um, modernization efforts. But the three things that really come to mind that EMS agencies, specifically rural and frontier, ask for, um, and, and it played out in the 2019, uh, Listening Tour with our partnership with Office of Rural Health. And I will point out that Amara and Rachel have been working closely with the Office of Rural Health, as well as, um, our representative from our office who's working on ambulance service area plans, very closely. Um, but education, both continuing education and initial education. One of the areas that we hope to have, uh, by the end of 2021 this year are what we call REMSIs, which is Regional EMS Instructors, um, placed around our state, five of them, placed around our state to be able to help with those efforts in education, both initial and, um, and continuing education for our providers. And of course, with the virtual, uh, platforms, we've been able to do quite a bit more, um, and people are able to stay in their communities and gain their continuing education rather than traveling away, um, which saves them money. Another area is recruitment and, and retention, and, uh, that's always, like, right in the top three for, um, you know, needing to have better recruitment and retention. And we're hoping to partner with you and see what works for your area, your county, to recruit and retain EMS providers. And I know, Charlie, I've seen, uh, on social media, your agency particularly, um, you know, since the, uh, the merge or, uh, the, the hospital there becoming the primary provider, um, looking for qualified personnel, and, um, we're seeing more and more of that, of course, as the COVID surge continues. So, uh, that's a, a, a good area of improvement. And then the third area of improvement that, um, you know, that we hope to develop some resources for is, um, equipment, um, supplies, and pharmaceuticals. Um, so I just wanted to kind of pull that out for you because I think you were maybe looking for a little bit more specifics. Under, of course, other things like the ASA plans, do we have templates? Uh, we have a couple, but we're developing more as we go. So I think that, um, I just wanted to pull that out and, um, shine some light on that for, for this committee.
Thank you, Liz.
Well, I think, uh, if this study is done and, uh, we get, get this accomplished for Lake County, then it, it allows us for that next step to chase dollars to help make this, like, equipment and supplies, recruitment and retention, continuing education, and all those things become more reality.
Yeah, that, I would say definitely, because I think so often we operate and feel like, you know, things are going a certain, certain way or we have certain needs, but, um, there's, so often we don't have the data to back it up. And like you said, once you have that information, you can then apply that towards, you know, seeking grants and other forms of funding in order to support your needs, 'cause you'll be able to say, look, here, we have, you know, all this information from every agency in our county, and this is why we need your help. And I, I think that could be so compelling, um, to folks that are handing out dollars to rural and frontier agencies.
Yeah.
So is that how you see this survey benefiting the, uh, fire departments as well?
Yeah, I would say so.
Well, and, and another aspect to that is, um, just opening up the communications. Um, you know, oftentimes, you might live in the same community but never talk to your, uh, partners. And, um, you know, I, I don't wanna presume anything, but sometimes the fire department doesn't really talk to the EMS department 'cause they're not always the same agency. Um, and, um, I think that it's good to be able to open up those lines of communication and say, hey, we're doing this, or we're doing this training, do you wanna join us? Um, I, we're hopeful that that would also be, um, more organic piece that comes out of this work that we're doing.
Yeah, any other questions or comments anybody has?
Uh, well, I noticed you're, you're looking to reach out to, uh, High Desert RFPA, and I would just point out that there's actually two RFPAs in the county.
Okay.
There's also the Warner Valley RFPA.
Oh, okay.
Uh, well, in the county, yeah.
I love the green.
There's, yeah, that's.
Um, is there a Warner Valley, uh, Elets?
They're under us, they're under you, yeah.
I, I didn't see one of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's under the.
They're volunteered for.
It's a part of our ASA.
There are subgroups to.
Yeah, if there are any other, um, agencies or people that you'd like to see added to the contact list, um, definitely let me know and I can reach out to them.
It's, it's super helpful to have me here today because, um, the agencies that we see are those agencies, um, that are licensed with, uh, with OHA EMS and Trauma Program or that are registered, they may not be a licensed transport, but they're a registered EMS agency. So sometimes there are like quick response teams or groups of volunteers or, uh, subgroups, um, that, that we don't see. So if you have other contacts or people that are hardens to be reaching out to, that's very helpful to us.
Yeah.
Okay. Where, are you waiting for us for approval or what's the next steps?
Yeah, so we, um, mostly just. Yeah, so we um, mostly just wanted to kind of let everybody know this project, and like I said, we're right now just looking to see which agencies are interested and are willing to participate. And then I think really when, um, it comes to um, the survey results and looking at those, I think that's really when, um, um, kind of collaborating with everyone will be really important. Yeah.
True, yeah, of course.
Amara, uh, assuming that all the agencies want to start, uh, when will you start this and when will you finish?
Yeah, that's a great question, so, we sent out the um, initial just kind of interest and um, description of this project on August ten, and we got responses um, pretty quickly, so that was really great to see um, kind of the interest there. Um, we are still waiting on two more agencies, and then also the High Desert Inland um, Association as well. And then once we do hear back from everybody, we will be sending those um, surveys out pretty soon after that, and then kind of giving time for people to respond. Um, you know, I know that everybody has a law on their plate, especially for the fire season as well, so getting uh, um, going back to those surveys, when those responses um, kind of have been um, received and kind of analyzed, and so we're looking at um, it, it's really kind of the timeline depends on when we do get the responses and hear back. Um, but probably by early next year, we will be kind of reconnecting with everybody, I would say.
Does this sound good to the crowd?
I think it'll be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's kind of predictive what responses that they will find. We're short of people, we're short of money, fix it. It is a standard problem throughout the world of the United States, so there are only a couple of known solutions, other than pouring lots of money in from the state, which doesn't happen.
Well, I think the timing is right here, because if we can get this done, like I said, I think it'll help you for other opportunities. Before chasing grants and whatnot. Information would be great.
It'd be great if we could get the responses sooner than the beginning of next year. It shouldn't take four months to get responses back. So maybe, Amara, one of the things that you could do is advise either us or the commissioners, what your response level is in about uh, thirty days, that, so that we could follow up with those that might not yet have had a chance?
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you, um, yeah, that's definitely something I would do, is just making sure people are following up, so that we can um, get this started earlier than later.
Well, it sounds like you've got good responses from all of the ASAs, um, maybe there's a few of the other partners that aren't responding at the moment, but uh, yeah, just move forward with who will talk to you and get what information we can.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, alright, well, I really appreciate your time, and uh,
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you so much for having us, I'm, I'm really looking forward to working with everybody.
Thanks for letting us take up part of your meeting this night as well.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Alright, um, any uh, discussion on that topic and further?
If you, if you are interested, I'll be happy to send you articles of what's happening throughout the rest of the country in this very circumstance. Montana, um, especially, but lots of other rural counties are addressing the ASAs throughout each county, and what they're finding are solutions to deal with. Especially now, in this environment with fires and COVID issues, we need to be very thoughtful.
Alrighty.
The one big thing is uh, work on changing the scope a little bit. So, and in the listening tour in twenty nineteen, my name was all over that document regarding bringing back that EMT intermediate scope.
Yeah.
It was designed for Eastern Oregon, the fire unions took that out.
Why is that? Is there a reasoning behind that?
Yes, because fire problems were, you pay an intermediate so much, this amount, you pay a paramedic this amount. The scope between intermediate and paramedic is a paramedic can crack the chest,
Yeah.
do a couple other pretty intensive maneuvers, that you don't use very often, so bigger firefighters are looking at, hey, why are we paying these paramedics, we really don't need these skills very often, let's start hiring intermediates as well. International Association of Firefighters got involved, and got them to change, saying, we don't need the intermediate scope, do this EMTA. So that's one of the things that won't cost a lot of money that we need to bring back to Eastern Oregon, because that's critical, especially your cardiac events. Because those folks can push some cardiac drugs really hard.
Well, it's there, we can do intermediates, man.
And then finally coming back, but they took it in twenty nineteen, it was out, and we made a loud and clear listing tour that Eastern Oregon needs that scope.
Yeah.
It just needs to come back a little more early, and they need to not make you jump through the EMT advanced to the intermediate. It'd be nice to take that back away to where you base it for intermediate.
Well, I think it's interesting that she said the, the annual licensing was one of the things that popped red flag for them, why they thought Lake County was a good fit for this survey. And, and I would guess that the application for uh, and request for variances on some of the rules and things like that was another big item for them, because of the four ASAs that we have. So yeah, it's, I, I would imagine, judging from what she was saying, that Lake County is definitely on your radar because of some of these unique issues that are really not unique, as Charlie's pointing out, you know, that they're all over the country, but. Yeah.
There's still issues that we have to address.
Oh, absolutely.
From a county standpoint.
Um, on that note, uh, you know, I know that we're working on this ambulance service area plan, um, are there things that you're seeing that we need to take into consideration to add to that plan, Tyson, you know, just judging from your time here and?
No, no, I think the plan itself is pretty well in good shape.
Right.
I can't, I can't think off the top of my head that we've taken into consideration just yet, I mean, everything's in there as far as the varying stuff goes, and.
I mean, ultimately, the really, the only big thing that we've done is, you know, just making sure that all the ORRs and ORSs are updated.
Yeah.
Um, but essentially, it's the same plan from.
Ninety-six.
Yeah. So. Alrighty, um, we can move on, uh, we do have a timed item at nine forty-five, um, with Brad King from Warner Creek Correctional Facility uh, for an update. And we can move on to some of the other on timed items.
Did you guys wanna give us a few minutes?
Yeah, I, I took John, if you don't mind, I, I took John away from a personal, personal commitment this morning, so thanks for coming.
Sure, absolutely.
Oh, nice to see you guys.
Make sure you're coming by this weekend.
Yep. Yeah, um, you want me to come stand, where, where do you want me, I don't know how, how formally you, you want this, and I, I'll get John to back me up, I, I gave one of these to Commissioner Schillerberger a few minutes ago, we didn't, you all the way down the hall, so so again, my name is Philip Milburn, I'm the, the Clamath and Malheur Watership District Manager, so I supervise our field operations for both Fish and Wildlife in Clamath Lake, Harney and Malheur Counties, so in reality, I'm an administrator, I provide support to John, who, who you know, Ben Ramirez, his counterpart on the Fish side in Clamath Falls, the similar staff in Lake, or Clamath and, sorry, Harney and Malheur Counties. And my whole goal, and, and my philosophy towards this position is John is gonna work at the local level to integrate natural resources issues with other things going on in county government. My job is to support him, try and get um, policy support, you know, I, I always say that the boxes of policies, everything we try to do never fits cleanly into these little square boxes of a policy, it's always trying to, to tweak and adjust and, and make things work for everybody, and that's kind of my jo, my job. You know, our mission, as you well know, is, is Fish and Wildlife Resources um, for the state, and that's what we do. But where we can um, collaborate on things that have a nexus with that. That's what we try, we try to do, so, I'm new to the position, and um, I'm just going around and and meeting folks, and I needed to come to Clamath to, to pick up some stuff related to the position, and so I timed it to come, I'm gonna be in Clamath County tomorrow, and I just come in and say hi. Today, I yeah, just here to, to support what I can do to help, help John and, and you guys on issues that you're, you're working together on.
Do you remember Trevor, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so in that position now.
My, my previous job, so I've been with the agency twenty-five years, my previous job was essentially John's position for Malheur County, I was the district wildlife biologist over there. So I supervised just the wildlife program for Harney and Malheur Counties, and now I'm stepped up into the role, but Trevor vacated.
Oh, Philip, I thought that was an interesting conversation we had before the meeting here, when you guys came in to visit about uh, the interstate unit, do you mind just kind of giving a little update to that?
Uh, probably better for, for John, of course, but yeah, so no surprise, right, huge, huge impact.
Wildfires, closed forests.
Yeah, huge impacts to the interstate unit, Silver Lake Unit as well, from, from both direct loss of fire and closed public um, public access to, to a broader area. We heard from folks, and, and John brought it up as well, the other bios, um, that we probably needed to, for, to balance hunting opportunity with the available oper, resources out there, balance tags with, with resources. And so we took, so normally with fires, we make a decision after the season, you know, opportunity was lost, and then we choose to, to refund or not refund tags. We modified that policy a little bit this year, in that we gave people the option of opting out of their tags before the season. So if you chose to opt out, you've got your tag money refunded, you got your preference points back, and we gave you a point as if you were unsuccessful in the draw. We saw, depending upon the hunt, um, only about twenty-five to, to about forty percent of the hunters chose to go ahead and retain their tag. So somewhere between seventy-five and, and sixty percent of the hunters returned them. And so we felt like that was a better balancing of hunting pressure with available open areas and, and wildlife opportunity. We'll see how it turns out with hunter surveys and other things, but it was a, a proactive approach to, to, to avoid completely having to close hunting seasons, because, you know, we, we didn't feel like that was a, a step we needed to. So.
I'll, I'll, just, just to add to that a little bit, I, I struggled with that decision initially, but the more I thought about it, you guys, the more I think that really was the right call, and a lot of that has to do with irrigated land around the edges, um, we, if we close the season, opportunities that were otherwise available and fine, especially the landowners would have been taken away as well. And so by doing it in a voluntary way, we've, we've succeeded in reducing the, the harvest pressure and hunting pressure to, to match what's really out there, without taking away opportunity from folks that really could use it. I, I think it's ended up balancing pretty well. Um, and, and, you know, certainly we'll see what comes for the, for the upcoming rifle seasons, we're, we're still quite a ways away, weather can change, uh, decisions about what areas are closed and open can change, and so we don't wanna jump the gun too much, but what we're trying to do, and what we've succeeded in doing to date, is if we are gonna offer this opportunity as a hunt, we've, we've managed to make that call about two weeks before the season starts, to give people a chance to, to kind of make that decision, and so far, that's been very well received.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah. Good info.
Okay.
So mostly we're just here because we wanted to introduce Philip and say hi, we didn't mean to enter, enter, jump in the middle of your meeting, you guys, so.
That's good.
Had, had a, had a pretty full agenda, so, yeah, we didn't wanna take that up, I appreciate your work and your time, I appreciate you coming. I sold John away from, from some personal commitments, so. Yep, have a, have a good rest of the, the meeting, and, and yeah, thanks for the time.
Well, it was an absolute pleasure, Philip.
Pleasure to meet you. And thanks, John, thanks.
See ya. How are you? Um, so is Brad King joining us for truly?
I don't think so.
Alright, well, we'll just uh, move on to uh, special transportation ADA, uh, ADA policy. Uh, Melanie?
So I have a few policies for you guys to chat about. I had my um, FDA review, and that, which was great, it was my first one, it was put off because of coronavirus, and then they decided to do them virtually. Uh, so I submitted all of our plans and policies to them in advance, and they kind of reviewed our operations. So far, they've done us and the senior center, they're doing um, in report in a couple of weeks, I haven't heard the results from the senior center, um, they'll do a final wrap-up. But it was good to know that Lake County's doing a good job, in their opinion. There were some policies that needed to be formalized, um, our procedures were in mind, but we just didn't have everything in writing, so as a result of our audit, I have these policies for you guys to approve, just by consensus is fine, it's not really a formal county policy, um, just some time and effort on our part to get our policies.
Make sure everything's in place.
Make sure everything's in place, just in case, there's some good information. Um, you guys m, might decide to choose um, the FDA policy and adopt that to ours for purchasing.
Okay. Any thoughts?
Uh, you know, I have reviewed them, all policies, uh, like Melanie says, uh, there are definitely policies that need to have a place for the county, absolutely, and uh, you know, making sure that we do have ADA accessible facilities and and uh, a process there for, for all those involved with ADA, and anyway, it, it sets the county up to be, just to have everything properly in place.
Yeah, I think it'll help protect us, you know, one of the main things is we need to make sure they're on the website and easily accessible. Um, I've done some work on our website, but, um,
I don't know who we're gonna talk to.
They'll just know like, what looking, what county's going to provide, and like, how you navigate that if you need additional needs.
Okay, no, I think uh, you know, using the general guidance and procedures for implementing the policy, everything, it's really all written. So are we gonna take action, consideration on that today?
Yes, please.
Yeah. I'll, in a motion.
Or just consensus is fine for?
Yeah.
Them.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
Since our special transportation.
Consensus is what I'm making.
I think that we should adopt these policies.
Okay.
And make them available all the way.
You got the consensus?
Thank you, guys.
Um, so, with that, Brad?
Good morning.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, and uh, how are you guys?
Good.
You're welcome to come on up and speak.
I'll shake your hand.
You better.
How you doing, sir?
Great, how are you?
Very good, very well, thanks.
Jericho, nice to meet you.
Hi, very good morning.
Yeah, probably, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for working for all of us.
So, are you gonna? How, how was retirement?
Retirement's interesting. I was retired for about three weeks, and then I got hired back, so I, I'm really, really happy to be here, though. Um, I, I took some notes, because I'm, I'm gonna kind of be all over the board, but
Oh, sure.
I really wanted to tell Warner Creek's story, because it's a good one. I'm going through the lot right now, but um, I'm really excited about the future. I know with COVID and the mandatory vaccines, that's been a little bit of a struggle, so um, we're trying to work through that the best we can, um, but we do have plans in place, you know, um, we've been working, uh, the last situation that we were dealing with was the fires. So there's a major concern about the possibility that we have to evacuate. And we made plans in place well prior to the fires, so we have a good plan in place. We actually practiced on how we would evacuate, so just know that we have those plans in place if we ever need to. Glad we didn't have to, to do that. I really wanted to start out by thanking both of you, um, really the entire community for your support and, and helping keep Warner Creek open. I know, that, that was a tough situation, and I know it was really tough for the staff too.
I know that was a tough situation and I know it was really tough for the staff too. I came down here before I started and talked with the staff and this is really tough and a lot of people left, so we're starting to gain ground on that and getting the place fully staffed again. We're down probably about eleven, are we down eleven still? Okay, so we have, I think, four or five that we're looking at right now. So slowly, we're gaining ground.
In a stability, future probably plays a factor, people applying for Warner Creek.
Absolutely, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of questions about that, are you guys going to stay open? And you know, one of the the common themes from staff was you know, we really want to be relevant, but you know, and my response is they're already relevant. But we're going to bring back some things that'll help keep this place open and those are programs. We're going to build upon what we already have. I want to compliment Steve Brown for laying that foundation of safety and security at that prison. It's probably one of the safest minimum securities I've seen. They have very good, sound, basic security practices, so. That gives us an opportunity to kind of build upon that and look at different initiatives like the working way. So we're going to be focusing on that. And basically what that is, is it's a combination of staff wellness and how we do that is we normalize the environment to where it's less prison-like. And we give AICs, adults in custody, opportunities to learn without going through maybe a formal process and then losing everything. So it used to be, you know, if you're out of minimum facility, that if you get in trouble, you go directly to a medium facility and you lose your program, so trying to work with them a little bit more because we realize these guys are going to be released pretty soon. We just don't want to give up on.
So still do make mistakes?
They do and and you know, so many houses have to those facilities. So.
But you have a policy now for if you have something where they can have a second chance or?
Right, yeah, we're working on that, working on informal discipline. There's, like you said, there's still, you know, formal discipline involved if we have to. But basically, we together as the management team built a six-month plan just to really get refocused, recharged, try to get these positions filled. Look at work opportunities for the AICs, different programs. So we've been in talks with learning corrections enterprises, which used to run a call center here at Warner Creek. Unfortunately, they pulled out, I don't know if it was COVID or what it was, but I've been talking with them and they're looking at possibly adding fifty to seventy positions at Warner Creek again with call center. So there's, I think that's probably going to happen around January.
Well, that'll be good.
We're also working on the Warner Creek solar project. I've heard a lot about that, so we have a meeting tomorrow with RPG and my bosses to start that process. I know it's been talked about for a long time, it's just we're ready to move forward.
Good.
It's going to benefit everybody, so. And really just working on our overall culture, you know, things that may look a little bit different. And I'll give you some examples, we've been talking about the possibility of having some some in-town visits for the AICs, now AICs are getting ready to release. I don't know where these statistics came from, but an AIC can become institutionalized after about five years. So they get used to the culture there, they don't have access to the community. So what we'd like to do is just get them more access, even as simple as like getting their Oregon Trail card and having them maybe go down to for lunch with one of us, they obviously, they'd be supervised. But just doing something normal and interacting with people, hanging with a car, kind of like we do. Just a a normal thing that we do, just to get them prepared.
Things that we take for granted that someone hasn't potentially done for a long time.
Yes, because what I've found over time is guys right before release, it's so anxious about things that you could see it on their face, they're scared. And if we can help them through some of that, it may be more successful after. Another thing that we're thinking about doing as well, and we've done this at Snake River and it was very successful. And it's really moving for me too. We have an event that had a good facility, I think you were there when we did the Father's Day event? Or Father's Day, were they in there? Were they enclosed? Oh, yeah, so we set up a program for Father's Day where the AICs under supervision, now these these guys are getting ready to be released as well, just like Warner Creek. Give them an opportunity to meet with their family and actually wear civilian clothes, just like normal people and as a father, that struck a chord with me because this AIC's daughter was, she's like eight years old. And she came up to us and she said, hey, look, she didn't say, hey, look, she said, you know, I haven't seen my dad in real clothes ever. I've always seen him in those other clothes. And she was just so, so impressed and touched. So those type of things, just making that connection with the family too is so important. They really need to have that that positive connection, I know that doesn't happen all the time. But you know, I think we're obligated to try to work on those things. So those are some of the things that we're going to do, I've got, got a list of things, but I want to jump over to staff wellness real quick because that is part of the working way. We want to do some staff moments events. It's been really hard with COVID because every event that we we do has to go through the command center in Salem to get approved, so. We've had a had a couple of events, we had a barbecue for staff about three weeks ago. We're getting ready to do an outside movie event for staff and their families. It'll all be social distance, it'll be an outside movie theater type thing. And we've got some other things planned as well, we just want to make that connection with staff and make it a little bit more lighthearted in the prison environment, because I think that's contagious too. Have a positive impact and it can have a positive impact on the AICs as well.
Great. I assume you have a mountain of fire hose.
We do, it should be clean.
Okay.
It should be clean.
Alright, good.
Yeah, I went there, we talked about that and I went back and talked with Ms. Hammond about that. So we've got that going on. And I'm really proud of the crews, they've been out fighting it this year. And we will be getting back those crews as well, you know. When they decided to close Warner Creek down, they took a lot of our trailers, fire crew equipment, but we are getting that back.
Saw the crews out at Baton Meadow Camp, Jennifer RV, but they were working hard, doing good.
Absolutely.
Saw some smiles on some faces, you know, they were getting after it early in the morning.
I love seeing that stuff.
It's good.
Good job.
Are they, are the crews allowed to do any fuel reduction type work yet?
I know things have yet that I know of, I know that I was just in on the phone with Steve Brown last night and it sounds like we're going to be able to do some planting over the next three years or so. So that'd be.
Plenty of planting.
Yeah, that'd be a good opportunity, I remember doing some of that stuff in high school.
Getting some good boots.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Fall is a good time to do it. It'll be interesting to hear when that does become available, if they can do some vegetation removal. We've used that area in the past.
Okay.
I know different facilities, tanneman, have come in, do some landscaping.
Definitely open to it.
Yeah.
So my plan, along with the managers and our team at Warner Creek, we have that six-month plan and we'll continue to keep you updated on that too. We would like to finish a lot of what I talked about in the next six months and I think we can do that. And probably starting in January, we'll start looking on the recruitment process for the next superintendent as well.
So speaking of that, what is your tenure plans?
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I think this is it for me. Unless something else comes along or if I'm asked to do something different.
You'll be with us through January?
Through January.
Okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And have you got applicants for your position's replacement yet or?
We have not opened it up yet, we'll probably, yeah, we'll probably open it probably around the, right after the first of January. And we'll be done with it by the end of January.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe a couple of weeks transition.
Will you be involved in the hiring process?
Yes. Yes, I, you know, I've only been here for a couple of months now, but I really am invested in Warner Creek, I want the best for the staff and the community and I know Steve Brown did a great job, you know, just like I said, providing a good foundation for me. But also that connection with the community too. I kind of say he's probably, probably has more skills than I do and he had quite a connection here and I know he grew up here, but I know that was very important to him.
Well, we appreciate all you're doing to bring back a lot of programs and add new ones, so.
Thank you, I really want Warner Creek to be the shining star.
Well, I think, I mean, I have heard nothing but good things since you got here. Just from your leadership and your experience, it's, it's been really good for us. And I'm positive because we weren't sure there for a while how things were all going to go. And and just to hear that, you know, you'll also be involved in the hiring process of the person who will take that position eventually. It's really good for us to know that, so we're really grateful for your leadership out there because like you pointed out, I think all the community know we've developed friendships and relationships and gotten to know a lot of the staff out there through the whole debacle.
Absolutely.
And and they need the stability and that's what we're hoping to achieve, so really appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you, I wish I could stay longer with Warner Creek, but my wife. No, great, great group down here, proud to be here.
Thank you. Is there, I know you mentioned about the potential for solar, any other updates as far as the geothermal? How do you feel like the prison stands as far as using her natural resources there?
I think we're doing pretty good, I apologize, I don't have a lot of information on that. But I think we're going pretty well on that.
What's your first impression of that once, now that you've been here?
It's impressive, it really is, yeah, and I'm looking forward to getting this program going with power too. It's, I know it's been talked about quite a bit, we just need to nudge now and get it going.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, good seeing both of you.
Thank you very much. I'm ready.
Alright as well, thank you. Right, um. Good morning, buddy.
Good morning.
How are you?
I am good, I'm busy.
Yeah. So what item are you here for?
Sharon lady.
Ah, at ten fifteen, gotcha. Um, Sharon, you want to go, we could, we could go ahead.
I'm on, I'm ready, I'm on standby.
Alright, sounds good.
Yeah, you got interesting dialogue on your corrections facility.
Yeah, yeah.
So alright guys, the reason I'm in front of you today is we have two extraordinary funding opportunities, public sector funding that I wanted to bring to your attention and have you guys make a decision on whether you want to move forward or not. So would you like, would you like to start with the railroad project or the fairgrounds?
We'll go with the railroad.
Sure.
Railroad.
Thank you. I have to tell you, I never found a subject so hard to write about. And that's in thirty-five years, so yeah, so, okay. So we have a PowerPoint presentation for you, if you would find that helpful to focus your, your energy on or we can just talk about it, it's up to you guys.
Can we do the PowerPoint? If you have a PowerPoint prepared, might as well use it, so.
Yeah, Melanie, Melanie's on porch, come on, Melanie, smile.
So Sharon, you learned so much about railroads.
Oh my, I was at this party the other night and people are looking at me like, what kind of a geek mug are you? I was talking about something on road capacity and stuff on, you know, number of crashes in the US and they were just like rolling their eyeballs. So anyway.
Sharon, I need your host if you want to.
Okay, here we go, let's see, oh, okay, I shouldn't have brought it up when I was shooting the grab there, sorry.
No worries.
Sharon, where is it? Oh, I don't know, now I can't find it. Oh dear, alright, well, I'm totally grouped out now.
Well, we do see your screen.
Yeah, but you can't find my car, right?
No, I can't find that for you, sorry.
I know it's in your, in your email to me, if that's easier.
Yeah, I know, I got it in five places here, sorry guys. Alright, Connect Oregon, here we are. I even tested everything yesterday, huh? So can you guys see it now?
Yep.
Okay, so this is Connect Oregon and I believe you guys got funding from Connect Oregon, what was it, probably about four years ago maybe?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, right, so, and I have, just so you know, I have argued that with the program officer at the state of Oregon and I've also been, I've been engaging with David at your, you know, the railroad line. And him and I have talked about the scope of work and how best to approach this, so all, you know, all the footwork is already been accomplished. So this is another opportunity for us to to get funding, there's forty-six million available. We have to match it at thirty-one percent, basically anything over thirty percent is going to get us a higher score. So David and I agreed to go for thirty-one percent. And this is due between nine fifteen and ten twenty-nine this year with an award date of May of next year. And then you've got until two thousand twenty-five to get the work accomplished. We're suggesting that we go after, it's, the initial that we include with your, the base grant that's currently in front of the federal government that this is included in that scope of work so we could use it as the match. So this is basically, the scope of work would be, first we were going to complete the rail, improve the railroad ties. And then this scope or this next phase is in your master plan number two and it will fix the curves. If that's the most appropriate way to say that, you know, where they're dangerous and fix the sloping on the curves and the ties in those areas. And so what we need to figure out is how we're going to pay for the match. So if this is one point two nine four million, we have to come up with four hundred and one thousand, one hundred and forty as our match. These are your options, we get the base grant, we can use that and one We we get the raise grant, we can use that and we'll know that in November. Lake County, you guys can secure, you know, through a loan or something uh to 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 secure that money. Or the third option, which we don't know yet, but that's the um HP uh five zero zero six. Are you guys familiar with that, though, or are you on state legislature?
Yeah.
Okay, so that there's rest of emergency boards for to meet in January. And if they pass that, then that'll free up your other funding, so you guys can use some of that money as your match. So those are those are the only options that I that David and I came up with for you. So you guys need to decide if you're willing to take the risk and this is something you wanna go after or not.
We're going, we're going to hear about the raise grant maybe in November, is that correct?
Right, November twenty-two, yes. Yeah, that's that is the plan on that. And again, how competitive we are, you know, who knows, right? It's not one of those we can just score out and go, yeah, we think we're gonna be ninety percent. So and I already again, I I wanna reiterate, this phase of work is actually uh in your master plan. And I I guess it's called number six, relay heavy railroad bridges.
Okay. Melanie, you have?
Where are we for the two point nine million for the Chrissy grant?
For the Chrissy grant, that you, that would be uh reimbursed, uh you mean on the actual work process?
No, I was just questioning because I know we might be on the hook for that match still.
Oh, okay, that would be, yeah, that's a good thing, I speak to.
I was just wondering if the board could update up, update me because I wasn't quite sure if we'd resolve that issue. Because I know we can't use infrastructure funds, so I'm just thinking we have that big match and we might have extra. Which isn't the end of the world, but I just wasn't sure.
I think that committee gets together in October or end of October before meeting potential. So that could happen. Treasure comment, without the best.
Because do you guys have the, didn't you already commit the funds through the loan uh for the Chrissy match?
Yeah.
So if we get the, have the house, if the emergency board frees up that three point three five million, then that helps recover some of that, right?
Unless it's infrastructure funding and then it's not allowable because it's federal funding, we can't.
Right.
Unless they, unless they switch it around and we horse trade a little and they use lottery dollars. Oh, here's Anne.
Hey, how are you?
So we shifted that around.
I'm chilling slow.
Oh, yeah.
We were just talking about yours, must have been burning, no?
Okay, what's happened?
Um so um Sharon, you wanna, you wanna go ahead with your question again? So.
That the the question is on on the Chrissy funds, right? If if the emergency board does pass, that we can use, you know, they they switch that funding, then you'll be able to use it as match money.
Yeah, 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 depending, I'm not sure what is all available to the emergency board. If it is lottery dollars, I heard that when I just walked in, if it is, that is absolutely state money. That is completely state money. So if they use lottery dollars to match the Chrissy grant, then yes, that's absolute.
Yes.
Okay.
And and I think that's the issue that's or the potential risk or opportunity uh for all of us in Oregon. We don't know, right, until they meet.
Right, all we were told was that um Bob Melbo with ODOT would be administering the grant, the dollars for us, the match dollars. So it sounds like they're running it through ODOT.
Okay, is that a good thing?
Yep.
Okay.
That means we're not getting federal dollars.
Well, ODOT, ODOT will have the ability to to shift things around, I think. We just haven't, we haven't followed up on that. That was news last Thursday, so we need to follow up. Um to understand completely what that means. And that was communication rights abuse like rail. From Bob Melbo.
Yeah, I believe so, that's that was my understanding. I spoke with uh David, is there on uh in our meeting with, well, it was Friday, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I haven't, I haven't followed up on that quite yet, I need to.
Okay, sorry guys, that's all I, that's all any of us know, I think, until, it sounds like ODOT, Bob and ODOT are best um way to get that answer.
So what's before us right now, Anne, is uh another funding opportunity. It requires a thirty-one percent match. And you can see on the screen there.
There we go, yeah.
Which would be about four hundred and one thousand dollars that we'd have to come up with. And it would help with heavy railroad bridges and
Curves.
Curves.
And so is this the connect, this is the Connect Oregon project?
Yes, yes, Anne, it is.
Okay.
And and the good news is we have until April of twenty-two to match it.
Wait. That's not very far away.
Anne's world, she's like, oh no.
Well, but it's better than the fairgrounds opportunity where we have to have the match committed before we can apply, yes.
Yeah, we haven't got to that one yet. Well, maybe we better.
Oh, I know, it's okay, it's comparative, right? So, Anne, do you have any questions about this page since you missed this?
No.
Okay.
So, so I guess Sharon, uh you know, my gut right now is, I'd sure like to know more, when when is this due?
This is due um that's it, it's the end of April, I mean, the end of October.
End of October.
Yes. Ten twenty-nine is due, which we would wanna submit at least a week prior because of uh you know, the government grant through the process.
Is the um match a thirty percent requirement or are we trying to be competitive?
We're trying to be competitive. We have to match up to thirty percent and if you go over thirty, uh you get a higher score. So we we, David and I agreed on thirty-one.
Sure, because it's not David's money.
Well, I know, and he's also, he's chairing the grant review committee, so he'll have to remove himself because of conflict.
Okay, well, I mean, we will have to brainstorm some ways to come up with those dollars if um we can use, I don't know, I don't know how we'd use the raise grant, those dollars are already kinda like going down on the ground, so.
Yeah, but it's for, it's for Kennedy, um the scope of work is included in the raise grant too, that's why we did that.
Hey, but the idea is if the work is going to cost one point two million.
Mm-hmm.
You still have to have funding for one point two million. You can use funding for something else that's already going on the ground, paying for another project. So, there's a.
Yeah. Well, except for the one point two million is included and if we get the funding from the raise grant.
So really, really, the project would only be eight hundred thousand dollars in additional work?
Right, or and or we revise the raise grant to do more, a different, you know, remove the scope of work of what they're doing down the priority list.
Okay.
That's my understanding, sorry.
Okay, I see where you're going with the raise um match.
Yeah, you see what I was doing, yeah, I was trying to put the least amount of risk uh at the county level, yeah.
Okay. I, that's a David answer, like I'd have to see how that shifts the tasks around and and the the funding for the raise too. Like I'd like to see how that how would you be changing all of that again?
It 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 just, there's more priorities. I mean, the the scope of work, you know, on the master plan is is way bigger than the twenty, excuse me, larger than the twenty thousand. So we just moved down to the to the next task.
My thought is Sharon is uh I'd like to hear from David answer. But my initial gut tells me that we pump the brakes on this. Until we know for sure that this is something we really need to do. Because I'd like to hear how we come out on the raise grant. I know we have zero match on that, which doesn't help us, but I also feel like not many people applied for that grant. So uh maybe we will be competitive in somewhere or another.
Yeah, well, one would hope, you know, west coast, rural, community poverty, you know, some of those other considerations. But again, you don't know because you've got grant in yours. So alright, so then what the option is on this one is we would defer and then potentially pursue it again next year probably, right?
Yeah.
After, after you would hear on your raise grant, because you're not gonna hear it till November of next year.
Well, and when does the emergency board meet?
Uh January, that's my understanding.
When is that on that, Senator Penney, is on the emergency board, uh Kreschky is, okay.
They, they, yeah, it was February next year, but because they have several different funding issues, they were hopeful to meet this fall.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure if they, if they got that pushed through or not.
Yeah.
But we have, we do have a call with Senator Penney next week uh in the morning and Kreschky might be on it, so we could actually ask them that.
Yeah, and uh Connect Oregon, I I think it's a annual or biannual funding opportunity, so. And it sounds like the the railroad crews are, you know, their their work schedule, that they're at least committed at a a year and a half anyway on the next phase of work, so. If you can secure the funding in another two years, you should still be okay.
I'd sure like to hear from David answer on this subject.
Yeah.
So I can better picture the the grand plan here.
So what 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 do, what, is there anything you want me to do in that, or you guys wanna reach out to him, or what?
Well, just even the next uh railroad phone call, I think, if he gave us a little
Okay.
update on that, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, and he and he certainly was involved with me on, you know, putting all this together, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so at this point then, this project is uh this funding opportunity is on hold contingent upon um all all the variables that that are unanswered right now, right?
Correct, for me.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm consensus, yeah.
Alright, so is there anything else on the railroad project you guys want me to know about right now?
Um railroad, no. No. It isn't the last call, so I don't.
Well, we did find out that we expect um FRA approval of our budget revisions, which allows the FRA to contribute to more of the tasks in the Chrissy grant. That approval is supposed to come through at the end of September, so we can start getting reimbursed on things that have already occurred.
Oh, wow, that's good.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that that's that's looking good.
Yeah.
And it would be nice to understand our raise grants before we're committing money on the connect, I agree with that too, like that's, just see where we, where we're going by.
Of course, the deadlines before the raise grants now.
Yeah, unfortunately, time, maybe that's our wisdom, that we should just wait.
Yeah.
You know, I mean.
But you know, I mean, we also could apply and just decline it if we got offered it, but we don't have the raise grant as a match.
What does that, what does that do to us, though, if we if we apply for a grant and then denied it?
Because we can't provide the match.
Was that, yeah, and but does that put us in any kind of an awkward position for our next application?
Uh probably not, as long as you're candid, you haven't extended it and, you know, you you include that, what I have done, you engage in conversations with the funder, sometimes they'll just even defer it. You know, it depends on the regulations around that particular funding source.
Because, I mean, that's a thought, it doesn't hurt to apply, Anne.
But you know, it's up to you guys on on.
I don't know, now I'm sorry, I just do a little move.
So Sharon, so so let's put this on pause, if if we can.
Okay.
Let's uh make this a topic for our next railroad call.
Okay.
And and then we'll get back to you, Sharon, on what we're doing.
Wait, wait. Okay, so that that railroad call, right, is the middle of October?
No, it's every other week, so we won't be just Thursday, every Thursday, the eighth, I think.
Oh, okay. So that still needs you guys plenty of time for um to do some little, okay, I just wanted to make sure on that, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, I think that's a brilliant plan, actually. Okay, good, alright, we'll close this one out and then we'll move on to the fairgrounds, is that okay?
Yeah. Yeah.
And Rodney, while I'm doing that, I believe you're in the room, did you wanna say anything?
No.
Spotlight.
Dude, I don't really, did Mark give you copies of the last uh phase four final update for the master plan?
Uh the revenue plan.
Well.
Master plan, revenue plan.
It's the final phase four, which is actually basically the first project. And so I made copies just in case you guys need to, yeah. Um and basically, that's the, it talks directly about the first project that we're thinking, that we're trying to go for. Which is the indoor multi-use events center, which is the covered arena and all that.
Okay.
And we are waiting, we haven't put that out public yet because we're waiting for a revision of a three D picture for the whole project. They gave us one just for the first building that we were focusing on. And we asked, we requested a picture of the whole master plan. And so we're waiting for that, which we thought we'd have last week, but. And and so while you're looking at it, um the project costs, so I was talking to Sharon this morning and a lot of of our match part can be done in in-kind, which we have the capability to do. Because a lot of, a lot of that is ground preparation, infrastructure, you know, we can dig ditches, we can do all a lot of that kind of stuff. We can do the demo on the barns. You know, a lot of that stuff that they have a cost in there for, we can do. Well, not me, not Nick, but we can get done in a whole lot of various ways, in a lot cheaper fashion.
So I'm looking at the uh okay, outdoor arena, alright. Fourteen screens, okay, we still got the main, we have, we gotten rid of the horse track, is that?
No, uh oh, well, in the in the future, that's one of the parts of the master plan. They'd like to move the, get rid of the horse track and move the arena directly in front of the grandstands. And that's down the line, but so that people are right there in the action instead of being across the track from you. And that was part of a stakeholder, when we had a bunch of meetings, the round, that was one of the roundups, main suggestions. Is to have that.
Okay. So the roundup committee and the fair board committee have been working on this together?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so this, what they call this plan refinement, that's basically the refinement on the first project of the whole master plan.
Feels like we've lost a whole lot of square footage for parking in general.
Well, but we're opening up a lot by doing, by eventually moving the vendors and everybody up to where the old barns are. It opens up that whole, the four H parking lot and the parking.
West side, northwest corner.
Yeah, up to, and plus there will be also additional parking. We've been talking a lot about parking for the I guess the roundup side, the north side, to it, to have more parking in the back of the north side where there's that whole big open area. And having a gate, for lack of a better word, coming in from that side also. So the parking doesn't have to all be centered around the front. It'll be more of a you kind of shaped parking.
So where are we at, oh, let's.
Take it away, Sharon.
Okay, you're you're done with the master plan question?
Yeah.
So my job was to figure out how our arena fit in this, right? Yeah, so I just wanted to share with you, uh first, uh you should have got a a draft um revenue plan for the project. So Melanie, can you confirm that they have that?
They should, I gave it to make sure they had it this morning.
Yeah.
Okay, so what what I did is I reached out to uh private and public sector funders um about the fairgrounds. And just first overall, you know, fairgrounds are hard to get private sector funding for, except for, you know, in the local community, like from Lushwag, you know, I mean, things like that. But most of the local support tends to go towards um the actual fair or the rodeo or the four H, you know, things like that. So what I was able to uh to to garner from my conversations and my connections with the funders on the west coast is we can probably raise uh five to six hundred thousand uh in private sector funding for the fairgrounds once we get the the uh some some monies raised. Uh, in private sector funding for the fairgrounds, once we get the the, uh, some some monies raised for the project. But nobody's gonna just step forward and write out that first, uh, quarter million dollar check, um, from the funding sources that are are larger, you know, like six figures. So just overall, that, you know, that's what I saw trending, and then I talked to the USDA, and I was a little surprised that probably fifty thousand is about all. That, uh, the fairgrounds or Lake County could secure in some kind of a loan for the fairgrounds right now, over the next couple of years. So I just, for me, those were really big, um, confirmations on why, or affirmations on why we should pursue this SNAP funding, and we're willing to take that risk. So is there any questions just about, uh, how I developed the revenue plan, or, uh, the thought behind that?
Just a comment, uh, we know that there was ten million for Clamton Lake County's, uh, fairgrounds, and it looks like, uh, you got plugged in here four million for Lake County.
Yeah.
From the Rescue Plan Act.
Yes. So did I miss something there?
Nope, nope.
Okay, yeah, so.
We just haven't heard a lot about that money.
Oh, you're about this, about the the SNAP money?
Yeah.
Okay, so can we move on to that conversation then?
Sure.
Okay, so that that is really what, uh, was driving this this, um, today. So we, first of all, just so you know, Ronnie and I and, uh, Setco, you know, business development people, the working business solution people, we had a really good conference call. With the program staff out of, uh, Oregon about the SNAP grant, and got their thoughts and guidance, um, on all this before we even, you know, did any foot on the ground work on it. So just that's the background on it, and everybody's really supporting, um, so we just had to figure out if this is something that we ought to be looking at or not. So it's a great, you know, I can't find, I have not identified another chunk of money that's this large. That will leverage other funding if you guys are ready to get the fairgrounds project going. And I hate to say, but in light of, uh, what's going on with the pandemic, this might be enough, you know, have turned into a good opportunity for the fairgrounds for a funding source. So four million, uh, towards the first seven point four million on that, and that would be cashing in kind. And this would then, uh, be able to leverage that half half a million to six hundred thousand I was talking about in private sector funding. On that, so that's what that looks like, um. The the challenge on this one is, you guys have to have all the funds committed before we submit. And, you know, whether that's a bridge loan, a line of credit, you know, however you want to do that, so if we want to maximize it and ask for four million, which is what was suggested by. The Oregon staff, which is a West, uh, his name is Wesley, um, then we have to figure out how we're going to commit to that three point four million. That's that's really the bottom line on that. And then these are just things I've already said to you, fifty thousand dollar USDA is the biggest I could find on that funding feedback, and you do have support from. Um, the E D A staff in Oregon, Oregon Business Solutions, Setco, uh, Travel Oregon, uh, because it's really important that they're on board with this too, the staff down in, uh, for Southern Oregon. So if you're gonna do it, the last day you want to apply is January thirty first, two thousand twenty two, the sooner the better. We need to allow six to twelve months for that processing of the application. The E D A, uh, will place the property in the name for the life of the grant, uh, which I'm sure this is not something new for the county, but we would want to make sure we ran that by your attorney. And you guys will rate a higher because Lake County is considered a low income area, so that's a scoring, you know, that works to your advantage. Uh, construction considerations, there will definitely be a clear impact and outcome on this. This this does align with the local, uh, comprehensive, uh, you know, plans for for visitors, travel, economic development. Uh, you need to be shovel ready at the time of the application, which is not now, it's at when the decision is made, which could be up to a year. And we need to enforce the strong, you know, follow all the federal labor standards, which you guys give anyway. So the focus of the funding source is infrastructure, public access, tourism, resiliency. They'll probably fund a hundred and fifty projects, up to ten million. Uh, another thing to your advantage, which we really are focused on, is the emergency site, you know, that the fairground provides for fires, um, animals, people, all those things. And at this point, we're using about two million a year as a projection on the economic impact of the fairgrounds and visitors, uh, for. For the, uh, for the fairgrounds, for the county. Any questions?
Do you guys feel confident on securing the private sector funding?
I do.
Yeah, it's it's gonna take a year or two, um, you know, because these are big grants for, uh, the, I call them the top five funders in Oregon. But they're, you know, porting, I'm talking half, you know, porting nine, uh, took five years ago, remind me of, we get a lot more, but we can't because of the pandemic and all the D E I issues. Um, but they're, they won't even talk to us until we've got some money started.
So I I have to back up a little bit, are are we saying that the ten million dollars available for Clamton Lake County for fairgrounds is through this competitive grant process?
No.
No, it's ARPA.
So what what is the the dollars for Clamton Lake County for fairgrounds?
Six for Clamton, four for Lake.
On top of this competitive grant?
Well, if you look at this.
Sorry, I'm.
Spreadsheet, where I have the star shows the four million.
But isn't that, isn't that my projection, are you looking at my budget?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because I wasn't aware that those are two different pots of money.
That's right, are they?
I don't know, I don't know, nobody has mentioned this to me.
But I didn't find. I thought they were two different pots.
Sounds like it, because this is a competitive federal grant program. I mean, the one that I, it's SNAP money I'm talking about.
I have no knowledge of the Clamton Lake County amounts that you guys have been hearing about, so that's why I know.
Well, that's what we're, well, no, that's what we're saying, we haven't heard a lot about it, almost nothing, but I I mean, but our understanding was.
That there's ten million.
There was ten million, six to Clamton for the lake, and we haven't heard anything else about it.
And where did you guys hear that, who was the deliverer?
Actually. Well, actually. Uh, yeah, Representative Reskey.
Oh, so do we know if that passed?
Clamton, uh, what's that?
Is this out of their district funds that they all got?
Uh, yeah. What's that?
Is that this, are there, uh, are these those district funds that they all got for the representatives to to disperse, however?
I don't think so.
Oh, okay, because that was on six million.
I I mean, it's a big question to ask, I mean, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Because this is a competitive process that I, and it's just as hearsay from listening to you guys talk, I thought there was an allocation that was a little bit more. Almost like a earmark, like, here you go.
Yeah.
For fairgrounds in Clamton Lake County inside county, so we need to bird dog that and find out, if it helps or not.
And it was ten million.
Yeah, but we haven't been able to hear anything more than that, ten million.
Anything more.
This is, you know, like, say, this is the first time I've seen four million for Lake, so.
Obviously.
I assume that's the split, it's four and six.
But her four million in this is this competitive grant?
Yeah, it's a SNAP, it's a competitive SNAP grant, yeah.
It's not those same dollars.
It's not the same, that I think we're talking about two different.
Says American Rescue Plan Act, travel, tourism, and outdoor.
Right, right. So that's what they should, and that's competitive, so I think what we need to, the first question is, we.
Sorry, I'm studio in a box, my.
I think we might be.
We need to confirm that four million, and and is that is that committed?
Which, if they.
No, it's not committed, that I'm aware. But I just thought, everything I've seen, uh, Representative Reskey.
I'm I'm not saying.
Yeah.
Which isn't much on this, does show ten million for Clamton Lake County's for fairgrounds.
Okay, and maybe he's talking about this same competitive grant, I'm not sure, but it'd be nice to.
Yeah, that's what.
Maybe, yeah.
Know for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm not discussing, I'm not discussing with any of your elected officials, you know, then for us, it was that one meeting and then this conversation with you guys.
Because because they don't rule out, say, fairground money, any of the ARPA stuff, but we know there's.
There is support for tourism, and yeah, not development, yeah, yeah, so I'm not, I guess.
And outdoor recreation, right.
And aren't they running it through the, uh.
I doubt they're two, two bucks a ten million.
Through business organ?
Right, right.
So, yeah, aren't they running it through business organ? The the direct funds that were give, that were allocated to the different representatives for allocation within their districts.
They've talked about it, I don't know if they finalized.
Because wouldn't that be this, or there could be confusion, and this could be that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how they did it in Lane County, that's how they got the money for the wildfire recovery for for McKenzie that I'm working on.
So maybe these are the dollars that Rush is talking about.
Maybe they are, and they're exact same, okay.
It just happened to be the same dollar amount. Okay, so who's gonna do what to find, to clarify that?
Oh, we need to talk to Reskey, for one thing, get some clarity, so, we'll be talking to Reskey next week, but we can call him today, too.
Okay, and then if you are getting that funding, uh, then let's see, that's, is that, that's state money, so we can match this. Federal grant with state money, you just can't match with federal money.
Well, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume it's state money that Reskey's talking about.
I know, so we, uh, it's, we can't, we probably can't then.
We got zero info on that.
Yeah.
They haven't seen the ten million for Clamton Lake County.
Yeah, like you said, maybe it is the exact same, same program, but it, you, I thought this was an ARPA grant, like through grants dot gov.
It it is, it's a, it's a federal, it's a grant.
So this isn't being ran through business development, this isn't, oh, it's through Oregon business development, this is federal, so if.
Oh, no. Right.
So if there's other dollars that got allocated through Oregon business.
She, yeah.
Right.
But she did not say Google that, but Ronnie, who's that ARPA, Annette or something, sorry?
Oh, Annette, yeah.
Benny? Yeah, yeah, she was on a conference call, kind of in a hurry, but she, that was what, two or three weeks ago, she didn't say anything, yeah.
Well, Larry Kohlskine should know what, if there's dollars through Oregon business development, or, yeah, fair amounts.
Okay, well, it would be nice to have such a problem.
Yeah.
Sorry, I feel like that's, that's kind of like a gift horse, you know, or, I mean. Because then even with that funding, we could, you know, leverage the, at least the half million in private.
Yeah.
Um, it it would be really cool if we could then also, um, use it as a match, and I don't know.
All right, well, let's get to the bottom of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And.
Find out more.
Find out more, or we can move.
Good, wow, maybe it's Christmas time early.
It is unusual times, for sure.
Yeah, I know, and and what I have found with all my other work is, you know, when these opportunities are presenting themselves right now during the pandemic, or as a result of. Go for it, because there's, some some things are really actually doing well, you know, as far as new funding, yeah. Okay, all right, so I will be on hold until I hear from you guys.
Thank you. All right, okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
What are we talking, you in Christmas Valley? Or?
Not.
Uh, Kevin's, uh, still on his way.
Oh, still on his way, okay, that's that.
Yeah.
I can talk to you about Christmas Valley. Okay, guys, thank you so much, and have a good week.
Thank you, Sharon.
All right, thank you, Sharon.
Have a good one.
Bye.
Bye. So. Um. Hmm, interesting, very interesting.
I thought maybe she had something going on for Christmas Valley, too.
Good, should do have to do it.
Oh, she would. Um. Then I think I did talk to her about some, some of the Christmas Valley water projects already, but I don't think we've really dealt into it. So, um, real quick, Melanie, on the, uh, item that we gave consensus on, does that include the, uh. Uh, because it's on the agenda in multiple places, and as far as, that's all of them together, basically?
That's I'm taking here.
Okay, so we don't have to go through one by one, but, and that includes the special transportation reasonable, reasonable modification policy?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Um.
If you don't mind, should I can ask Ronnie?
Oh, sure.
Ronnie, phase four master plan refinement.
Yes.
Says phase four.
I, well, I know, yeah, that's because the, so the first part of the master plan that we had done was actually, we had funding for about three quarters of the whole plan, and we went ahead and went forward. So that was phases one through three, is what they called it, so that's why when we got the funding to do the final part of it, they called it phase four. But that has nothing to do with the phases within, the project phases within the plan.
So what has been the investment today for?
For our plan, um, seventy five thousand.
That we paid a group to help?
Yeah, we went through L R S Architects in Portland, um, mostly because their history is with a whole lot of fairgrounds. And they're act, they're currently doing something with Clamton, um, they do, they do a lot with Pendleton, they've done a number of fairgrounds throughout the state, so that's kind of why we went with them. And we've given them a run for their money, they came back with a a great plan, it was wonderful, but, but we said, no, you can't move this, you can't move that, you can't do this.
Yeah, I wanted to move the building, and everything else, yeah.
We just, you know, and and I mean, it flowed, it would have been wonderful, but it's not what we needed, it was more, a little bit more state of the art than we would need, I mean.
And it probably would have been a tremendous additional cost to move buildings and everything else, which which is what they were.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so, so, um, they did a great walkthrough, or the board, I have to give to my board, they did a great walkthrough, and, um. With certain ways to deconstruct and reconstruct building two, they've created an open pavilion to the rewrite side, a walkthrough for tables and and traffic pedestrian walkthrough. I mean, they, they really put a lot of thought into it after they got the, and they could see what people were thinking, and then they, okay, yeah, so it actually, it's gonna be really cool.
Good.
And really workable for Lake County.
Yeah, I look, I want to read through this, this is.
Okay, do you want the first part of it, too? I mean, that's, that's literally just the last portion of it.
Yeah, you've got it.
Okay, yeah, I can, I can send you the whole thing.
I'll take, take the whole thing.
You will, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll welcome.
All right.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Um. So next up, uh, we have ordinance fifty two discussion, and this is, uh, what are you guys saying on this?
Yeah, I didn't get the word.
Good saying it. Um, ordinance fifty two and, uh, Lake County clerk piece, so are we looking to set, um, a hearing on this, are we opening up? Or is this what Stacy's looking to do with the clerk piece?
Stacy's not looking to do anything, um, so there's been some issues with ordinance eighteen with dog enforcement. Um, some of the tickets have been kicked back by our deputies, and because we don't have a fee schedule for ordinance eighteen. And ordinance eighteen cites ordinance fifty two point one oh three, which sets our dog fees, and these are the dog, well, I did some research on other counties, and there are three schedules for. Different dog opportunities, and I found one county that had a criminal infraction, and then one that has a misdemeanor category, and so the, uh. The deputy can use their discretion on.
Which one?
Which one might be best for the dog at large, and then I included.
You have first and second, third, and that's, but, oh, that's really good.
Because he can't enforce a ticket because of, well, the court won't process them anymore until we update our schedule, so if you guys want me to proceed with this, I can start the hearing process.
Thoughts?
Proceed, I think that's a good plan, consensus.
Um, temporary oil C C permit. Um, this is, uh. Um, this is uh, Catman Sellers LLC.
Fort Rock, event again, Rock Horse Park.
Yeah. Another big event.
Same event as the previous minute, right? Approved.
Uh, it's the same venue.
I think it's a different, same venue, different date, I think it's later.
Yeah, different date, and I'm not familiar with uh, Catman Sellers, so it's gonna be a different. Yeah. I, I.
It's not the same event though?
September twenty-third, twenty-seventh, no, I don't think so. I don't believe that's, those dates are the same.
No, the one that we just approved up there was this weekend.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I don't see a problem with it, they've got the four days that they want for, or five, excuse me, twenty-third, twenty-four, twenty-fifth. Twenty-seventh. Uh, five PM till eight AM. Okay. Oh no, that's eight PM. Okay, so just three hours over there between five PM to eight AM. Okay, each, each evening. Yeah.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the uh, special event, winery application, Catman Sellers for the days of September twenty-third, twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. At the Rock Horse Park, Rand Horse Ranch. As presented.
Uh, we'll second that motion, uh, with that second, um, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So. Really, the only thing that we have, just wanted to make sure that I. Okay, we have, we have minutes, but I think I'm gonna go on to uh, Kevin, senior, how are you?
I'm good.
Good, I, hey, I was up in uh, Christmas Valley yesterday, uh, Fort Rock, and so we went out, we're looking at the roads.
Oh, great.
Just look fantastic.
Yep.
Just that black boxy, looks, looks incredible.
Looks like a new road.
Yeah. So, um.
Well, that's what we were doing this morning, I don't know, Eric, if you wanna, if you have a question to do however.
Yeah, you're welcome to stay back there, whatever you wanna do, whatever's coming up.
I'm gonna go back.
It's like, if I, if I can, I'll, I'll just present this, and then um, I have a couple updates for the road department, but if I have five minutes, I.
Perfect.
So, in front of you, I hope, is this agenda item for the Christmas Valley Town Water System, uh, to support them with ARPA. Um, funding, in cooperation and coordination with Lake County Road Department, Christmas Valley Water District is in need of some funding to support their water line in Valley under Christmas Tree Road. At the intersection of Christmas Valley Highway and Christmas Tree Road itself. So, we have a intersection improvement plan, um, in the road department budget, separate from. Completely separate from what Christmas Valley Water District is doing, except for that, their lines under Christmas Tree intersection at the Chevron there. Is in need of upgrade before we improve the intersection, and their lack of, or I should say, current funding issues internally. These infrastructure dollars could go to some very good use here to buy the assets they need for their system. Um, I guess two things, so that we're all on the same page, is that these dollars are not for road department in any way, shape, or form. And this is not an open-ended ask for funding, this is just, I, I thought that, I thought that this might be appropriate as we're gonna. Co-op this with the water district to get this project done, help us with our intersection, that maybe there's some funding dollars available to get them. Parts and pieces to do this project. But again, this won't pay for asphalt, this won't pay for anything that has to do with the road department, this is all gonna be waterline asset for the watering district.
Yeah, and as the proposal says, it's basically just for pipe, parts, pipes, and valving, et cetera.
I, time that I take this up, and, and talking with Erica on the phone, and maybe she has some more information, you guys can ask her, but we didn't have. A clean estimate of dollars, or I should say, she didn't have, and so I couldn't give you a hard number, but. The assumption was that it would not be to exceed thirty thousand dollars for valving, pipes, and those kind of things.
Erica, do you have any, um, any other numbers that you've been able to glean from estimates of source cost?
Um, as of this morning, I had not received an estimate yet from my vendor.
Okay.
Um, he was working on trying to get it together, um, there's one, I had my repairman dig up the valving there at that quarter, because we had replaced the valves there. Um, there's one difficult line there that we're gonna have a problem with, um, and my vendor's trying to get the parts. Um, or get a line on what, the part I'm gonna need, um, there's another line going under Christmas Valley Highway. Um, and it, yeah, and just with the lines going under Christmas Tree, and it's coming in at, it's not even really a twenty, uh, twenty-two degree angle. Um, because all those old valve assemblies are welded, so they just bent the pipe and did whatever they had to do to load them in. Um, and so I've gotta get a mechanical joint that's a flex joint, that can be manipulated, you know, to get it back into a valve. And that's the part that we're having trouble, um, with him getting a price on. Um, I do know it's a very expensive part. Um, but he just hasn't been able to get a line on giving the price on that part. Um, as of right now, um, roughly, uh, just those valve assemblies and the joint restraints are around ten thousand. Is what I've got for the, for that, um, but that's without the other, the other parts that I need. Um, and that's not including uh, conduit, um, Kevin and I talked about that, um, I talked to suppliers that I typically get that steel from, it's not gonna happen, I'm not gonna get steel right now. But we've talked about some other things with, with that.
So you're not gonna get steel right now, that's what he says, so.
No, not gonna get any, not, there's no possibility of me getting.
As it pertains to a sleeve for the actual water pipe itself.
Got it.
Yeah.
Not for the water pipe itself.
It's not, it's also not gonna happen.
Okay.
Um, well, drillers aren't even gonna get casing right now.
Can you use existing sleeve, or do you have sleeves?
There's no existing sleeve. Um, I spoke with Daryl Anderson, um, he stated that he sees no reason to even sleeve it because we're gonna mechanically restrain it. And have open trenching, as long as I go rent a compactor, um, and I have one of his guys there, um, uh, measuring compaction on it. Which I have to be planning to do, I will have one of his guys there, um, measuring compaction, and I will go rent a, a compactor.
So, you feel thirty thousand, it's, gives you a little bit of up for, but uh, should get the job done.
Absolutely, yeah. Um, we did, I had actually originally approached Kevin on this when I heard you had a commissioner meeting, um, that they were gonna be paving that, and I knew I had that old steel jump pipe in there. Um, so I approached him to find out when, you know, when this was gonna happen, uh, because we were applying for all that funding. And my hope was, is that we would receive it and be able to get that done before he came through into that.
Right, yeah, we talked about this.
Uh, so did not let it come in and dig it up after the fact.
Right.
Or have to add a bore in, and eat up so much of my funding with my job. Um, but then, it just, the funding, all funding I was applying for just didn't happen.
Right. Okay.
Our, our project, I wanted to do this fall, I have it, I have the dollars in asphalt line item for this. Current fiscal year, I'd like to do it this fall, which means she has to get her work done for her car too. Um, and there are things that I can help her with, um, to kind of help facilitate that move along. But even if I don't, and I have to do it in the spring, that's, that's still acceptable to our, our plans fiscal year wise. But we still need to move forward with her work so that we can do ours when it comes time when the weather fits.
Right.
Because, I mean, tomorrow's September first, I think, but when you're talking about asphalt, it's, there's only gonna be so much time. Available to do that this fall, right, um, and our, this project is a huge buy, so I have to try to coordinate when, when an asphalt plan is already running, so. There's scheduling issues, if we wouldn't, if we wouldn't get our paving done this fall, it's not detrimental, but that work shouldn't be done.
Yeah, at least get the new water line in, and we've already moved around, and got another paving, you know, wait on me to see if I can get funding.
Well, and that's a heavily used intersection, so, you know, like, like Kevin's saying, you know, getting that done this year is huge, and then you can come back and. Do additional work to it even next year, can you?
We, we probably aren't, and, and this, this'll go with my company after we've talked about this item, but we probably will not actually chip seal. Anymore through, in front of the Chevron, it, it would, it would not stay put, there's too much truck traffic and too much twist and turn, so. A wearing course, intersection improvement with asphalt and a wearing course would allow for durability over a longer period of time than chip sealing, and that's why I wanna do it that way. It's the same theory on putting the intersection at three ninety-five and redoing that, because there's so much truck traffic there, twisting and turning, that oil and chips won't stay on the road, so.
Right, right.
And when I discovered that old steel line also going under Christmas Valley Highway at Chevron, um, when we dug up the valves, I called Daryl Anderson. And we put it in the plans for the loan that we did apply for, um, to save three quarter woven loan that looks like we will be getting. Or the block grant that um, Melanie's worked on, um, that we, I moved my priority list, um, for line replacement. To abandon that line going into the highway there, so we can just get rid of it, um, so we don't, again, have to dump much money into a bore. And also, if, if Kevin's gonna be working on redoing that section in front of Chevron, um, so I don't have that old line going into the highway that's risking integrity there. Um, so we'll do what we need, whatever we need to do to abandon that line, right now I can't, because I've got the post, or the. Park and ref building and the library connected to it, so I can't just abandon it right now. Um, but we'll abandon it in the next project, I'll get rid of it, and then also, um, I put in priority to redo the line. That runs in front of Chevron from the valve assembly we're gonna be hooking onto, um, to the east side of the gas pumps. So that we'll get everything in there along that intersection replaced. And just protect all of that there. That is a very big intersection and very important, and a big main line break in there would cause significant damage. Because in a town, that is the only area that's paved, and so water would sit under that asphalt, and wouldn't come up to the surface, it would cause a problem. So I might all redo them.
So when we say abandoned, that just sounds unclear, the old lines is just gonna sit there, we're gonna do, make a new trench. Next to.
I think she's talking about two different things, the abandonment that she's talking about will be future, and it's perpendicular with Christmas Valley Highway, there's an active line there now that supports two buildings.
Yeah.
So they can't kill it right now, but that can be bored and upgraded later on, we won't, we won't have to open cut Christmas Valley Highway. Look, the project that I'm talking about for parts and pieces are, valve assemblies are, will be an open cut on Christmas Tree Road and installed. So that then we can get it back welded and have it patched in. Perfect, and then pave it next spring, or we would maybe be able to get asphalt here this fall to do that as well.
Cool.
Either way, though, I think what she's trying to stress to you is that while we're doing this, or while she's doing this, provisions will be made for that, for the next one.
Yeah, yeah, I'll be putting stuff in to make sure we can abandon that next line, um, just to protect that whole intersection.
So treasure, come right, this will be our first ARPA money to spend.
Or second, but yes.
Or second.
I'm glad she brought up the state revolving fund, because any project that qualifies for those dollars qualifies for ARPA dollars, so it's a, it's a perfect fit.
Okay, just wanted to hear that.
And I did just receive my letter to apply, my invitation to apply, um, for the state revolving loan fund, and our application, I believe, very specific. Um, it, Daryl and I, we're working on their portion, the engineering portion, and I believe it's our next.
Is the, so just on the process for, um, for us, um. Not to exceed thirty thousand. Basically, it's just the receipts and basically, or how, how are we going to, how's the, those dollars, uh, how will those dollars be transferred?
Well, the, I mean, I think we can do a pretty simple like MOU, just state it that way, not to exceed thirty thousand for, you know, all these. Waterline parts and valves and things like that, and then to be reimbursed, yeah, after invoice the middle. We can do that pretty, even.
Okay, because my motion will, will definitely reflect not to exceed the thirty thousand.
Yeah.
But um, I'm just wanting to make sure that as far as the invoice receipt, upon receipt, the reimbursement of those dollars takes place appropriately, so I just wanna make sure.
And if there's a cash flow thing that we can help with, if you have a good hard quote, like if you have a good estimate, we can, we can fund off of the estimate as well.
Yes. Yeah. Okay.
And move, just move.
Okay, it's my reserve fund, yeah.
That's what I meant.
Yeah, okay, so let's go back with the cash flow issue, and then we'll just work, we'll just work with them if that estimate is way off.
Right, okay, so we, if, if you have a solid estimate, we can just go ahead and work through that cash flow issue, all right?
Okay.
I'll look for an MOU, we can get that, we can find a, kind of a simple MOU to get in and into.
Okay.
Do you guys have a, what did, what did we find, a public water?
Do we, do we need in the MOU, or can I have that reflected primarily in the motion?
I guess you can do it with the motion, that'll work. Do you guys have a, what was the number we needed, a public, a public water district number? Do you have?
You have bars to my beat?
Yes.
Zero, zero, one, six.
Perfect. I actually will have to report that on the federal report.
Yeah, they do have, you guys do have that, so yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I saw that somewhere, I can't remember where it was.
Zero, zero, one, eight, six.
Yep.
Okay. All righty then, um. I'll go ahead and make a motion to uh, to approve uh, thirty thousand or not to exceed thirty thousand. Uh, for the Christmas Valley Municipal Water District. And uh, those, to help with the cash flow issue. Upon receiving adequate quotes, we'll be able to transfer those dollars directly to you.
To be conducted on Christmas Tree Road?
Be conducted on Christmas Tree Road, so.
Okay, I'll second.
Motion's made, second, um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Glad to, glad to help.
It's a nice start, thanks for opening up. Well, this, it, it will, this is actually a very appropriate use of that funding, so we can move things along, it.
Yes, Kevin.
It affects, it affects a lot of things, affects a lot of departments, and it affects traveling public and businesses, so this will all be good, good. That was a thank you for your time on that one.
Like Barry said, this is our second time spending those dollars, so it's kind of a, right, wanna make sure that we're still doing it right. Anyway, you had a, you had an update?
So I'll just give you guys a quick update on some of the finished work for the summer activities that you mentioned when I, when we sat down, when I sat down here, so. We will have completed, I, I hope today, that's why I was up there this morning trying to move things along, although the smoke and. Mother nature with the temperatures is not helping us get, get completed, we may have a little oil we have to shoot tomorrow. Um, but we will have completed then fifty-eight miles of oil and chip seal from three ninety-five to Chevron in Christmas Valley. Yeah, Christmas Valley Highway, and then all of Old Lake Road, um, with. Relative success, um, we averaged just a little over five miles a day when we were chipping, so, um, that was a. A lot of productivity.
Yeah.
Um, for, for what we, what we like. Um, for, for what we, what we like. Um, and so line painting then will follow, our new line paint truck that, um, we got here three weeks ago. Three and a half weeks ago from Klayma is working well. The water base is a lot easier to keep things clean out. I don't know how far it went on Christmas Valley.
I didn't go out where I saw paint, so.
All, all the lines are on now from three ninety-five to Fossil Lake Road, so they're between Fossil Lake and, and the Chevron. And then they'll be painting all Old Lake Road, so probably the rest of this week and maybe a few days of next to get all that done. And then I'll have some leftover paint and we'll probably put a second coat of line paint on what we chipped last year, which would be. The majority of West Side District, anything that got surface treated last year.
Okay, and you're gonna be taking that all the way to thirty-one? In the fog seal?
On Old Lake Road.
On Old Lake Road, yeah.
So, there, there's an exception to a specific location on Old Lake Road that will not get fog sealed because we do not have, um. Coordination or cooperation with a certain landowner that can't seem to keep water off of our road. So there will be a second.
And it's causing a tremendous amount of damage.
Well, it's, it's already, it's already created damage to us, um, to our, to our asset, to our facility. Um, and so I'm not going to invest any more dollars in that section, uh, which is unfortunate. So we'll see how that plays out. I'm assuming there will be concerns from that constituent specifically as to why. We can talk about the same conversation I've had with that individual four or five different times, so. Um, but there will be a stretch of eighty-five hundred feet that will not get fog sealed on that road. We will put lines on because you gotta have lines on.
But it won't, it won't, just won't have the black.
It won't be black.
Color to it, but.
And later on in life, if, if there's better cooperation and understanding as to why we can't have water on the road when we're working, then we can always do that. Work next season when we're there doing the same. Next year's plans are to go from. Christmas Valley, the intersection there, Chevron, um, to eleven mile corner, we'll do aero gap, oil drive, all those roads, so. We'll, we'll be there next season, but, um, the time is coming to an end for the fog seal for this year.
Eric, you have a question?
Um, I just wanna tell Kevin if you left a chat going after the meeting, I can help you out with that one.
Hopefully somebody can.
Yeah. I, uh, spent some time trying to get ahold of the landowner yesterday and, uh, to no avail.
Yeah.
But, um.
No, I actually, I, I might be seriously helped out with that.
Well, we've, we've had these conversations and I've brought it to the meeting before about ordinance twenty-three. And, and while it, while it's not a road ordinance, it, it directly affects how productive we can be because if wastewater is on the road, we can't do our work.
Right.
Well, there's another way that they'd be seriously harmed, as, um, a lot of rest of trouble.
And just so you know, we've since started turning to, uh, review ordinance twenty-three. Um, it was last signed by county commissioners in nineteen ninety-one.
Right.
We'd like to get it updated, uh, make sure that it holds oil.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, uh, that it will be enforceable, uh, in the future when we do have a code enforcement officer in place. Or in any matter that, uh, you were to issue a citation. And so hopefully that will be done either at the end of this week or next week. Probably be next week before we see something better for our attorney.
Okay.
So we're moving forward on those parts to help out the process.
Okay. So as far as the surface treatment coming to an end, then we'll pick up and start to prep drainage facilities and. Do all the general maintenance practices, shoulders and things of that nature on what will be next year's surface treatment rounds, which are in the road advisory book. Of some of those rounds I named. And. That's what we'll be working on for the remainder of the. Season.
Yeah, and, uh, I imagine, I, I don't know when we're gonna get any rain. Have you had, uh, many calls on graded roads and roads needing to be graded?
Um. I haven't had, uh, a great deal of calls on gravel roads. Um, we recently, with, uh, help from. Commissioner Schulmberger coordinated some water delivery to fix up Cottonwood Road again, and that. Was due to fire traffic that that road is not designed to ever have on it, so. Um, but we were able to try to put some of that back together. Um, that is the road that we worked on right after July, we worked with a bandway machine to make improvements and, and. I, I realize that we probably all got phone calls on it because of the. Ratability concerns, but the true reality is that I'm glad we did that work in July because it wouldn't have held up as good as it did had it not.
Yeah, like, because there was a lot of traffic on it.
We added, we added a lot of binder to it when we did that work and we re-crushed material that was already in place. And made a better structure and arrow of the road and did some things in July that. I, I was actually, I, I realized that people were complaining about the road itself, but. The reality is for the amount of traffic that was on it, it held up pretty well.
Um, it's been, so we don't have a speed limit sign on that road, is that correct?
The O R S, uh, statute for the basic rule in Oregon is fifty-five miles an hour when there's no speed limit posted. Um, we don't post, uh, speed limits without a traffic study through O dot. Um, because of the basic rule that says fifty-five miles an hour for conditions that allow. That's a state statute.
Good.
Um, we, we will advise or put an advisory sign up on a corner or at a intersection. Or an advisory speed, but there is no regulatory speeds that we will put up. There are some in the county that are up on gravel roads. How they got there? Either a commissioner at the time decided to put it up or a road master at the time decided to put it up, but the reality is that they, they hold no regulatory value. They, they mean nothing because.
You're not aware of an O dot study.
Correct.
You need your documents.
We have, we have several situations like that in the county. Um, the theory is that if you put a speed limit sign up that people abide by it, the reality is that they don't. And unless we have enforcement, it creates another trickle-down problem where we add signs to a road that don't. I guess aren't obeyed, if you will, and then it creates another secondary enforcement issue where we can't enforce that speed limit the sheriff's department has to.
And I believe you were talking to us about asking for O dot, uh, study there in Christmas Valley.
So I, I've already submitted that, um, and it, it includes recommendations that we're, we're requesting from them for the. Um, what's the best way to put this? For the outer limits of where that speed limit should be because. Even though there are some residential, um. Areas through Christmas Valley, meaning from between the church and to the west end where Rainbow Road is. It, it actually doesn't meet some of the specific criteria of what a residential area is, the, the actual wall, the actual black and white written version. Um, to, to John Q Public, it probably does look like a residential area, so the speed limits through Christmas Valley. While they are there and the signs are there, um, they were, that was decided years ago and just placed, so. We are having a study done to include the limits, where the signs would go, and also I actually put in this year's. Budget in our signs light item for advisory signs, solar powered advisory signs that announce what the speed actually is of the vehicle. So similar to the signs that you read when you go into the car. And we'll place them when that study's done and. They give us some direction on the reality of it.
Any idea how long that study should take?
Well, before the whole COVID. Um, which I think is becoming, I'll use this time to say my personal feelings is becoming an excuse for delay in some functions. Um, it was a year timeframe, uh, so I don't know. I've been calling to find out where they are.
I was just curious.
Yeah, before, before COVID was an excuse, it was usually about a year when you ask for a traffic study or a speed limit study. So I'm hoping to hear something this fall so that, um, after we do the pavement improvements, we can get the signs installed and. Kind of rework that section of. Road.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, congratulations on the work on Christmas Valley Highway and Old Lake Road.
Turned out well.
Yeah.
It's gonna be fun continuing on next year.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you so much, Kevin.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Erica, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I'll just real briefly just wrap up. We have, uh, meeting minutes, work session for, um, August seventeenth. And regular session for August eighteenth.
Make a motion to approve work session minutes from eight seventeen and regular session minutes from eight eighteen of twenty twenty-one. As presented.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. With that, we will adjourn the meeting at eleven twenty-one. Thank you so much.